Mike seconded it.
Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. I don't believe our applicant is here. Are you representing the applicant tonight, sir? Our applicant is not here yet. Sorry? Oh, you haven't here ready. Well, I was gonna just let you know that. So, do y'all wanna wait a few minutes? I'm gonna try to get a hold of them to see if they're on their way. Okay. Okay, sounds good. I'm gonna try to get a hold of them then.
Do we have to start over?
Tess.
Good dear. Well, just to get it out of the way, the first item on the agenda, or the only item actually, is ZV forty-six thirty-seven, at four-three-oh-two Eighth Street, St. Simon's Island. Consider a variance, request for a variance to Glen County zoning ordinance section seven-oh-one-point-five to allow for encroachment of a pool and porch into the side yard setback along Bruce Drive. The point seventeen acre property is owned R six, one family residential, and is located at four-three-oh-two Eighth Street, St. Simon's Island, parcel ID oh-four-dash-one-four-two-three-six. Vase Kate, applicant, Thomas J. Burton, owner. Could I hear from staff?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is on his way. He said about ten minutes. Yeah. If you'd like, I can go ahead and go through the presentation, and then there might just be a few minutes before he's able to be here. If you'd like to. Yeah, exactly. Okay, well, I can go ahead and do that. Okay, this is ZV forty-six thirty-seven. This is four-three-oh-two Eighth Street, St. Simon's Island, and parcel zero-four-one-four-two-three-six. There we go. Okay. And as the chair noted, the applicant is requesting a variance to section seven-oh-one-point-five to allow the encroachment of a pool and porch into the side yard setback along Bruce Drive. There is an existing single-family dwelling that currently sits across two lot lines. So, it is an older home that has been on one tax parcel, but it was two legal zoning lots underneath that. So, the owner is proposing to demolish a single-family home and then actually build two separate units on the two legal zoning lots. And so, the variance is for the unit that's at the corner of Bruce and Eighth. There is another unit that's gonna be interior, but that is not part of this variance request. There are two large live oak trees, seventy-two inch and sixty-inch diameter rustite twin oaks that are on the site. They are currently really right in front of the existing house. And the new house was issued a building permit, but the building permit does not include the side porch and the pool, which is the subject of this variance. So, the building permit as it was submitted did meet all the setback requirements, and so the county did grant that. The applicant, you know, was aware that it is, that it's up to the Board of Appeals to determine whether he could get the variance for the porch and the pool. The required side yard setback along Bruce Drive is ten feet because it is a corner lot. So, typically, a side yard setback in R six would be seven feet, but on a corner lot, it's ten. So, the variance for the porch and the pool, they're looking to be four feet from the property line. So, the encroachment would be a total of six feet. So, again, the four feet would be the setback from the property line instead of ten feet. So, here is the survey of the property. This is Eighth Street right here. This is Bruce Drive. And these are the two zoning lots right here. So, here's this one on the corner. This is, a few years back, they did basically a reconfiguration of these lots. Historically, when East Beach was platted, the lot line was actually right here. And so, the lots were here and here. And a few years back, they did just reconfigure, and so the lots now basically front Eighth Street. And so, the side, you know, is Bruce now for this lot. This is the existing, this is the existing house. As you can see, it's not built across the lot line, but it's very, very close. It definitely doesn't meet the setbacks, but this is the lot. And these are the two oak trees that they're proposing to preserve right here and here. This is the applicant's site plan that they are proposing. So, this is the new home. The property line is really where this wall fence is located. So, this is the property line here. And so, their pool, this is a four-foot setback from the property line for the pool. And then, this is their side porch and the four-foot setback here. And again, here are the two oaks that they are proposing to preserve. And so, the building is being shifted towards Bruce in order to give some more open space and open soil area for those oaks. They also included their, their basically tree preservation plan or the tree safe fencing around the trees. So, they have shown that, that they plan to keep intact throughout the course of the development and construction. So, here's just an aerial. As you can see, the canopy of these trees is pretty substantial at this corner. And then, here's a photo, standing on Bruce Drive, looking towards the existing house. And so, these are the two oaks. And this is Eighth Street that you see over here. So, these are your, these are your variance criteria in order to grant the variance. And these are your possible motions. Staff is recommending approval of this. The applicant did work with the county arborist and me regarding this. We asked them to kind of go back, when initially, they were gonna take down these trees to develop the property. We asked them if they could go back to the drawing board, come up with some different options to be able to preserve these trees because they were such significant live oaks. So, what they did come forward with was this, which includes the variance. And because of St. Simon's Tree Canopy Preservation Ordinance, you know, was really designed to do just this, I felt that it was a flexibility that would be appropriate in this location. The Bruce Drive right of way is eighty feet. It's very wide in this location. And as you, as I mentioned, the lots had originally been configured to basically front on Bruce. So, a lot of the older homes that are along Bruce are actually setback closer to Bruce than what this existing house is. So, I didn't feel that it would be too out of place with what the layout is of a lot of the homes out there. So, that is staff's recommendation, and this is a public hearing. If you can open up for public comments, and the applicant should be just a few minutes away now. Thank you.
Yeah, actually.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
They, right, I mean, they are planning to limb up that tree, but they are, I mean, they're indicating that they are, you know, they're not gonna be limbing it up to the point that it would be destroying the tree. So, and yeah, and I don't recall. It is a two-story home. I believe it was a beach cottage style, but when the applicant comes in, they can share a little more about that design. So, with the, yeah, the root system, so it does not meet the specifications of the actual tree ordinance. So, if this was, so, single-family homes, the only aspect we look at for the tree ordinance is the thirty-eight inch or greater live oaks. So, in terms of like actual meeting the open soil area calculations, this project does not meet it. It does not really have to. So, what we're looking at here is, yes, it doesn't meet every specification of the tree ordinance. However, you know, is there flexibility in, you know, the applicant proposing to do their best effort to preserve these trees and keep these healthy through construction in order to try to keep those? So, it's kind of a balancing act, I guess, of looking at this. Right. The existing house, I mean, is really right over the root system now. So, there's already been, you know, impact on that root system. I mean, we, you know, we can't guarantee, you know, the long-term, you know, health of these trees. I mean, that's definitely a difficult situation to look at. But we felt that this was a good effort to try to preserve these. So, yeah.
Yes, yep. Good morning again. I have a couple of questions. I've been wanting to ask this question all along, and I've just been remiss, and when I go home, I go through my notes. What was the basis of the recommendation? And who was the staff?
Sure. So, staff, in this situation, is me. I was the staff planner that worked on this project. So, the basis of the recommendation is, and we can go back to, you know, this, so this list is, you know, basically what you all would be looking at to determine whether a variance can be granted. And so, what I looked at was new conditions that are peculiar to the particular piece of property, or they're extraordinary and exceptional conditions. So, the existence of these significant trees, I felt, were extraordinary for the site and, you know, peculiar to the particular piece of property. So, that's where I felt that this did fit in. You know, clearly, you know, it's up to the Board to make that final decision. But when I looked at the St. Simon's Tree Canopy Preservation Ordinance, you know, these are small lots, and they're, it's tough to design around them. I think a couple of meetings ago, you all saw another project out in King City, that they were also preserving a tree and came before you all to do some different things. So, I think that's in the spirit of what we're, what we'd like to see happen more with the tree ordinance. But same as that property and this property, these are smaller lots, and whether these trees can, you know, maintain or be maintained for many years. I mean, it's, just the future will tell. You know, we don't, we can't guarantee that these trees will be there forever, but that's basically what we looked at.
I'm not as well-schooled as my friends here. So, my question is, and I think I understood it correctly. Initially, if I'm driving from the Marshside, and I'm driving down Eighth Street, so the property's on my left, originally, those lots ran parallel. But now, as I saw it, I understood it correctly. It's split in half.
That is correct, yeah.
And a building permit was assigned to this already.
That is correct, yeah.
Was, should I be, as I drove by, should I be able to see survey markers? I didn't see anything. Was it surveyed?
And I know that, yeah, that applicant has arrived. I believe, I believe I remember seeing some property corners when I was out there. But I, yeah, they can see.
The only reason I ask, I just became a homeowner after six years of condo living on the island, and one of the first things I did was had it surveyed, and they staked all the corners, even the monumental markers they staked. So, I was wondering why there was no stakes out there to really get an understanding of the property.
Okay.
But you're telling me it was surveyed?
I thought I recall, but the applicant can state more on that.
Okay. And the last question, just the procedural kind of thing. We're here, variance being requested for address forty-three-oh-two. But in the packet, the variance checklist is for property forty-three-oh-six. And so, if I go and look for forty-three-oh-two, there's nothing happening on there. So, is this, is this just a misread in terms of parallelism, in terms of what was being asked through your office? Or I just don't understand?
Sure, no, that, yeah, that's a very clear.
Because the variance checklist has nothing to do with forty-three-oh-two.
So, forty-three-oh-two is this corner lot right here. There were some addressing changes recently because they do have two houses going in. So, I don't recall forty-three-oh-six was the address of the existing house, or if that was the lot next door. But there are two different addresses here. So, forty-three-oh-two is officially the one on the corner. Sometimes, when this is happening, where you're going from one tax parcel to two tax parcels, you know, there's different parcel numbers assigned. There's different addresses assigned. So, that's what happened in this situation. So, when the application came in, they said forty-three-oh-six, but when I looked through and confirmed that the address is now forty-three-oh-two for the site that they're looking at.
Okay, that's all, and with due respect, that's a whole lot of words, and what you just said made no, made no impact to me based on what I asked. As a person getting the report, I take out my personal time. I go to drive. I have the papers in my car. I look, and nothing lines up for me. And so, I go back to my house and says, and say, this makes no sense to me. I'll have to wait till I go to the meeting because I don't know, I, it's not, I don't see any survey markers. I can't figure out what's forty-three, what's the forty-three-oh-two, what's forty-three-oh-six. I see a house being knocked down. I saw it already demolished. I don't know what lot that is. And so, that's fine. I'll stop there. It just seems to me that maybe in terms of things just being a little more parallel in terms of somebody rereading it and saying, well, this checklist that you put in the packet doesn't even match up to our property. The variance that the people are being asked for.
So, and you're referring to the actual application that was in your packet?
Yeah, the whole packet that I received, stuff is, and whoever, and, you know, it was filled out, and it's forty-three-oh-six. It gives the lot size, this, that, and everything, but they're not even, but that's not the variance they're asking for. And they gave all that information, but they're not even asking for a variance for that property according to the packet I got.
Right, right.
Okay.
And yeah, and that's a very good point, and I should have maybe clarified that more in the packet when that went out, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
I have a couple of questions. Obviously, the demo permit has already been issued, and the house is already demolished. What is, you know, they're saying the proposal here is to protect the trees. What is being done, they're supposed to protect trees during construction. Demo was part of that. Nothing is done. There's debris all over the root system, all up against the trees. So kind of indicates to me, you know, that hasn't been done to this point. Next question is, what is the protection radius or diameter that has been set? You know, I see, because I just went through this myself.
Right.
What is the protection radius that they have to protect? Because judging by the size of that tree, my guess is the protection radius is going to be larger than or will encroach into where the footer for the house is going to go. So how are they going to protect this protection area when they got to put a footer of a house on top of it?
Right, right. No, that's, yeah, that's a very good question. And that's where, you know, this variance, as well as the one that you all heard a couple of meetings ago in King City, are a bit challenging for us because we, all we can really go off of is, they're going to do the best they can here. You know, we, there isn't enough room to meet, you know, the open soil area requirements that we would require for new development. So if there's a new development that was coming in, it was going through site plan approval, and they were requiring a tree plan as part of that, the requirements would be much more stringent. But with these kind of situations where we're really just trying to do, you know, asking them to do the best that they can, you know, whatever the radius it is. And I think to your point about the demolition debris, we could definitely, you know, work with the applicant and try to get that cleaned up and get all that in place. So I didn't realize the demolition had already happened before this meeting. So the last time I was out there, the house was still standing, and they were clearing some things out. But, but we'll, yeah, we'll definitely work on that and get that into compliance.
And I just want to reiterate that same thing where, and it struck me that, as I read it, read the report, it seemed to me that maybe a big piece of it had to do with those trees. And then when I, so, and then when I, the first time I drove by, as Clifford said, I mean, nothing had been taken care of. And then I went by there this morning again on the way out. And now, the protective temporary fence around the borders been put up, but still, nothing. And so it just, it didn't strike me that, and you kind of reiterated, yeah, that's our big recommendation because of the trees. And then maybe this will go to the applicant. But my other question was, and obviously, I know enough, I don't walk on anyone's property. If I'm Board of Appeals person or just a resident, I don't walk on other people's property. But from my car, it seemed like, there were like two or three branches that would kind of go through the house. And it would seem to me those branches have to be cut. And was that, was that ever part of, in your consideration where, okay, this has to be cut? So maybe that will in fact challenge the integrity of the tree? And maybe the whole thing is, we take down these trees, and then this whole thing moves a little bit more smoothly, it seems. That's, you know, and I'm not suggesting, you know, how you do your reviews and stuff, but that was just my impression. Not being a contractor, just being a layperson, going off the, you know, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Yeah. No, I think that's a very good point, and Chairman Barry, you had a similar comment is, you know, how, you know, how many stories are we looking at? You know, that's good if you can preserve the tree, but then if you have to limb up to a point because you have a roof that's going into the canopy, you know, how much does that, you know, impact the integrity? And I do not know the final plan on how they're going to be limiting that up. But I do know they are going to be limiting, you know, those up. But they state they're still preserving them and not destroying them.
Thanks for fielding all the questions.
Sure, no problem.
One more. Yep. And again, because I just went through this, I kind of versed on it. If through the tree protection plan, and I'm assuming Chuck has reviewed all this, if A, we don't approve it, or B, we do approve it, and the house goes in, the tree fails or dies, what are the repercussions? Or if we don't approve it and they just take the trees down, or they're, because like in my case, I've got two trees I got to protect. If one of them dies, which is probably going to happen, it's in my paperwork that I have to replace it with five trees. Is there anything in this to the effect here? Because these are substantial trees, and I totally get trying to save them, 100% get that. But I just, there's a lot going on here to try to protect the trees. And then on the other side of it, too, I'm not in the business of, I'm not here to grant variances for financial gain. And, you know, taking one lot and putting two houses on it, that seems to me what's there. It seems like the tree protection is secondary is kind of what I'm seeing. But that's kind of the question, is what is in there for if these trees do fail? Or when they do limb them up and they don't live, what's the, do you know what that is, or is that a Chuck question?
No, I mean, it would really be up to, up to the Board of Appeals of what you would like to put in as conditions. I mean, if the trees, you know, don't make it through construction, or if they do make it through construction, but several years down the road, you know, they're just not, they're not making it. I mean, you all, you know, would have the ability, or you have the ability now, if you were to approve this, you could approve with conditions that if these trees, you know, do not make it, then you require, you know, X number of live oaks to be replaced. It's kind of, it's tougher to enforce down the road, but it's something that we could definitely make in the notes of the record. And so down the road, when they apply to the county to remove those trees, you know, we can pull up this property and look back and say, well, there were conditions placed upon this when the variance was granted. So that is one option. However, in terms of if the trees don't make it or if they have to take them down, I mean, this is, this is kind of, it's a risky, I guess, approval. I mean, you're, we can't guarantee that the trees are going to stay. So it's really, you know, how comfortable are you with the preservation plan and with what's going on on the site that you feel that these trees have the best chance of surviving?
I have one question. Is there a written report from the arborist on this issue?
No, not an official one for this. I think, you know, because, because these sites, you know, what we look at for the St. Simon's Tree Canopy Preservation Ordinance, I mean, that's what we see as, this is the best practice. This is, you know, these are the recommendations we have for the best chance for trees to survive and new trees to grow and mature to a longer life. So because these, this doesn't meet the ordinance, we don't have an official report from the county arborist on this. So that's how we've handled this one. But I'm not sure if the applicant, if they've talked to their own arborist and have some feedback on that that they can share.
Okay. Any more questions for the staff? All right. All right, thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead for the applicant.
Okay.
Could you step to the podium, give us your name, and let us know what's going on?
Oh, yeah, my name's Vastika Kate. I'm a landscape architect, and I've been a part of moving a lot of trees and planting a lot of trees, so I know a little bit. The reason the tree protection is not up now is because the house on the west side was up against touching the base of the trees. So we couldn't put the tree protection up till the house was demoed. And it'll go up today. This is, you know, our initial plans were to take the trees down, and county staff was after us to try to come up with a plan to save them. This has been two lots of record since the original subdivision plat, you know, whenever it was, 20s. And so we were trying to work with Chuck and come up with a plan we best could to save these trees. So there will, everything on the western house, you know, a house was already up underneath it and right up against the roots. And the eastern one, close to Bruce Avenue, will have to limb up. I think there's eight leaders that'll limb up, but a good portion of the trees will be done. But I mean, if you go around, say, like, Frederica Cafe, and you look at those oak trees in that parking lot, or, you know, you go to Frederica and look at the thousand oak trees I moved out there on a, you know, we moved all those on 22-foot diameters, or the ones that the same people who worked for me back then moved at the roundabout. Those are 22-inch diameters from the center, 18-inch deep. So, you know, the tree, it could survive, you know, we can root prune it a little, it's been root pruned on one side. So these trees are pretty tough, you know. But then again, we could, you know, what we've done is we got a building permit without the porch, basically. The structure of the home is not in the variance. And so it's really just the pool and the porch is what we've done now. And we could probably take the rear one back and the slide portion of the house back over, you know, and not need the variance. But this is just something that, you know, Stephanie and Chuck pushed me to go through, so that's why we're going through it.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? I got one of Vastika.
Go ahead.
You say you've looked at it and you anticipate having to cut out seven limbs, is that what you said?
Yeah, I think there's, there's like two or three dead limbs on the west side that need to come out, and there's probably like five or six on the right side that need to come out for the house.
Right side, that must be the side towards Bruce Drive?
Bruce, yeah. If you're facing it from the front.
Uh huh. Well, I hadn't seen the plan of what you're doing there, and it looks like to me that the.
The front's, the front's kind of stepped back where that pool is, it kind of steps back, you know? So those lower limbs, the back tree's already kind of a little higher, it's the front tree that's a little lower.
Right.
But that house, the foundation of it was right up against it. So there was no tree protection could have been placed on it until the house was removed. Because it was within inches of it, both of them, the house, you know.
So your view as a landscape architect, you think the trees have a pretty good chance to survive?
Yeah, it's obviously not ideal. But yeah, I think these trees, because they've already lived with a house on the other side, they kind of, you know, they've grown out. And we'll step back, I think we got 12 feet on one. The back tree's more concerning than the front tree. But in the variance, you know, on Bruce Drive, there's a pretty good right-of-way there.
Eighty feet?
Yeah. And we're only putting the pool, you know, the vertical wall, the pool shell, and then that porch, you know, in the deal. I didn't want to get too aggressive because I didn't want to handicap myself or I couldn't build the house. I got it where I can just take the pool out and still build it without the porch, you know, as it sits. You could slide it a little farther into there, you know, and maybe get away from the trees might help, maybe a couple, three more feet. But, you know, that's up to you all.
Okay.
But I mean, we're just trying, you know, this is, this is something Stephanie wanted us to do, and so we're just trying to preserve the trees best we can. Like I said, it's been two lots of record since it was planted in.
No matter, what you're saying, no matter what happens to trees, you can still put two houses there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been, I mean, it was two lots from the beginning.
Right.
It's two lots now.
Interesting. Okay.
And on the dress question, you know, I think this, the old address, just how they did it, the old, the existing address just happened to go with the lot 14A, and they established a new address with 14B. It could have gone vice versa, that's probably why the address is. And then it takes a few weeks or a couple of months for GIS to catch up, you know, with these changes typically.
Right. Okay. Any more questions for?
Yes, yeah. Sir, pardon me if you kind of answered it, and I can't, I couldn't hear everything that you were saying, make it out. You mentioned that at an initial stage, you would consider taking the trees down. If you were taking the trees down, would that have negated your need to seek variance?
Yes. This is all, this whole variance is associated with trying to preserve the trees. And it's like Stephanie said, there's a risk versus, do we try to keep the trees and get a variance? Or just not worry about a variance and not try to save the tree? You know, it's, that's the whole deal. And the front tree, like I said, I'm not somewhat, the back tree's a little tight, but I, you know, I think it'll be fine.
And just as an aside question, not getting into your personal choices, had you considered flipping the houses? So that there wasn't, and if you flipped the houses, would there be a need for variance if you kept the trees? You have two lots, you're building two houses. If the pool house was put off of Bruce?
The architecture of this house lends itself more to the limbs, the limb structure. The other house is a true two-story. And that's since the footprint's a little smaller. If you're just, you're just looking, you're not looking at three-dimensional, you're just looking at two-dimensional, right? You haven't seen the elevations? So in three dimension, the other house is actually a true two-story. And this house is scaled back where the garage is and all to kind of accommodate some of the limbs, so we can tighten it in there a little better.
Thanks. Like I said, I don't want to get into personal business, I just, it just struck me.
This house, the roof structure of this house lends it better to the limb, the lower limbs. The other house is a true two-story.
Thank you.
So it kind of sounds to me that what we're discussing here today is just the pool and the porch.
Yeah.
So you could build the house without either one of those, so.
But I probably wouldn't, I'd probably slide it back over and take that back tree out.
Just to get the pool in?
Yeah.
For value?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd probably take the tree, because, you know, then, you know, it's just, it's the easiest thing for me to do long-term.
Gotcha.
And then after it's gone, I mean, this front tree was still a pretty good setting, and you got the other trees in the rear. You know? But no, I would definitely, I would probably shorten the porch, but I would slide it over so I could fit a pool in. Because you got to have the marketability, I need a pool.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Any public comments? Anybody here got, anybody here for or against? Want to speak? Okay. Y'all got anything to discuss?
If y'all can make sure any discussions are on the records so that we can all hear them as well. Thank you.
Could I ask the applicant a question?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Pardon me, sir, I'm trying to, I'm learning this as I go along, reading these prints and stuff. We've been talking so much about the tree. Did I, am I understanding correctly that a swimming pool would be four feet off your property line? And the property line is the one that's parallel to Bruce Drive? So what's the, what's the fence or so around the pool, how far is that off Bruce Drive?
Well, this, all right, can we start at the, can we start at 40,000-foot level and I'll work down? You want, I'm going to start at the big picture and work my way down, okay? First off, I submitted to take both trees down and build two houses, okay? The staff wanted me to try to preserve two trees. I said, I can work on the first one without, you know, but the second one's not going to happen. So they wanted me to go through the variance process. To keep the variance process simple, I made sure no improvements go off the property. So no improvements go on the right-of-way, right? All we really are, only thing on that drawing puts improvements within the setback. So basically, what you'd be approving is a zero setback along Bruce. There's nothing off the property.
They're showing a four-foot setback. They say they're encroaching on the setback six foot.
Okay, six feet, okay. There's nothing going off the property. The fence is still on the property, the pool's still within the, you know, six-foot setback versus 10, and the porch is six-foot setback versus 10. But I'm saying there's nothing going off the property.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't, no, I understand that.
Okay.
But I thought, I, what I was asking was, if I understood it correctly, there's going to be four foot left in the setback.
I think there's six.
The pool's going to move into the setback.
Yes.
And.
If you put it back up.
Four feet left in the setback?
Yes.
And so does that make, and so I'm asking, does that make the fence four feet off Bruce Road?
There's nothing.
I'm not, I know you're not coming off your property, but I'm just saying, it's a buffer, is the buffer only four feet between, where I, I just went there this one, I took a left-hand turn and I stopped right there. And I'm saying, is the swimming pool going to be like, like right there, like four feet off my rear view, my side view mirror? I was on the wrong side of the street, I just made a tight curve, tight turn, because I wanted to get a sense of it in my mind. So is the pool going to be right there, the fence is going to be right there? No, okay. Eighty feet? Oh, that's what I was asking you. Oh, okay, no, no, all right. I misunderstood, I misunderstood, I'm good.
The reason I was there is, because the right-of-way on Bruce Avenue is so big, you're not even moving on those. This is your area. And my, all this will be landscape law. That's what this is still the property. The only encroaching is this shape right here, and this shape right here. Still, you know, the property is just... All that is gonna do is off that tree, but it's changed.
How tall is that fence?
It's a little bit.
Oh, that's an existing fence there now?
No, it's supposed to be something higher than that.
Okay.
This is good.
What exactly is, to your question, the easement from the pavement to the property line? Do we know exactly what it is?
It's an area, and you put right-of-way, which is the front, so I can see it all. There's an area for the right-of-way.
Yeah, that might show a little better.
It's considered rather...
It's like, it'd be about thirty feet from the, um...
Okay. See, that's where it confu...
Oh, I think you put right-of-way, you put right-of-way?
Okay.
That's where it confused me, because being, being the layperson, what I was looking for was the corner survey marker, so I can get an understanding of where the property is, where the road is, and not seeing any of that, then I just misread it, in terms of understanding where that property line came out towards the road.
I just put that chain, and so, it's...
Okay.
And there's some, I've got a kid, now, he can run this a lot.
Because like I said, I saw that fence this morning, and I, but it still didn't make sense to me in terms of what, what was what. I appreciate you explaining it.
Forty feet, bottom down, that's thirty-nine, thirty-one feet from there to that.
Oh.
And you have four feet, and you have... I think, I don't think there is any improvement, because very, and hopefully it'll stay on that, that tree, I'm trying to say. We'll get the tree taken up, we just go, do it in place, do it in this, this number fence, inside of the frame, you know, it's like twelve, about a mile or more. You can't do that, it's a whole house, it's still down, it's another house, and that's what you did, for, for the tree. It's also a good thing, because those, it's still over that house, but it's not...
Thanks, sir.
Now that I understand that setback, you know, that's what confused me, no, no survey marker, and the setback. That's a big, that's a big setback over there now. Like I said, I thought, I thought, like, part of my car there was gonna be like, right there. The confusing thing, sir, is that the right-of-way on Bruce is eighty feet. Most right-of-ways, you're probably accustomed to sixty feet, or sometimes even forty. You know, eighty feet's a large right-of-way. A hundred foot would be like a boulevard, right? There's a lot of county land over there, maybe y'all could, we start subdividing, stuff, taxes down.
It appears to me the project's gonna happen regardless. I think the thing, because he can, I guess he could get approval to get the trees down?
That, that is correct. So, there, there's some criteria that we look at, but one of the criteria is, you know, is it reasonable for the property be, to be developed with the trees on there? And so, where the trees are located, you know, the house would, I mean, you could develop it, but the house would be, you know, a lot smaller, and, so that's what we have, and that's why we asked them to kind of go back to the drawing board, was because we felt that there could be some flexibility there. But, but they could get approval to remove the trees.
So, with that said, the project's gonna happen regardless. He's either gonna cut the tree down, or he's gonna attempt to save it, and then cut the tree down when it, when it dies. Because if I was a bet, man, it's, it's, it's as good as dead, because when you start disturbing, and he's, he's the guru on trees, he says. But, I mean, it's more likely it's good. The project's happening regardless, he's going, I guess, the extra mile to save the tree. So, with that, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve, but, I mean, because it's happening. I don't appreciate him coming in late, but other than that, I mean, it's, I mean, our time is just as valuable as his. He might make more money per hour than we do, but, but ours is just as valuable as his.
I didn't know I was supposed to be here. I didn't know I had to be here.
Okay.
Until she called.
Okay. The, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Um, if I could, I would like to add, just an amendment with that, that when Chuck is available, I know he's out for surgery, but when he is available, that he work closely with Chuck to make sure we do what we can to protect the trees, because that seems to be the point here. So, I just want to make sure that there's some documented, that, you know, that our county arborist not, you know, if he wants to work with us first one, that's fine, but let's work with our county arborist to, to make sure we do what we can to preserve the trees.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and if, you know, if Chuck's not back in, someone else from our engineering team will, can go out there and, and keep an eye on the inspections and on the site.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second. All of us in favor?
Can we slow down for a second? Please, here?
Please stop.
Okay, all right. He made a motion that was not seconded. So, then, we moved on to another one, but we stopped, we didn't, we didn't act on his. So, what, what are we, what are we, what are we acting on now?
His, his motion, I just added to the condition that they work with our arborists.
Okay, so now, we've moved to, so now, the motion is approve with conditions?
Correct.
That's what I'm saying. So, when, we're...
So, if you, so you...
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to keep it orderly.
You wanna just restate it?
Yeah, why, yeah, once you've, if you can vote to amend the motion, take a vote on that, and then, and then make the motion with the condition.
Run that by me again. I thought he was gonna redo the motion.
And then I'll second. We gotta address the motion at the front pool.
Okay.
We'll take the motion off the floor.
It wasn't seconded, yeah.
Oh, it wasn't, okay, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm saying, it wasn't seconded, so we didn't, we couldn't have any discussion on it. I'm just trying to...
Okay, okay, I see. All right, so, yeah.
So, I can stay with...
So, you can amend the motion, and then, yeah, just stick with the second.
And so, you're making it with conditions, and you seconded it?
Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's kind of start this over. We'll make a motion to approve with the condition that the applicant work with the county arborist to maintain or do his best ability to protect the trees.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Chair, now, my question was, when you work with the arborist, does, can, will the end, can the end game, will the end game possibly be take the trees down? Or is it only about saving the trees?
Only about saving the trees. Where, arborist...
At what point?
Huh?
Because I just feel that there's, there's, I just feel like there's so much undue hardship in what's going on with that, that property trying to be developed there about those trees. And we're talking about, they might die. I thought I heard it say, well, in the end, they might die. We're talking about, it seemed to me that branches have to be cut, those kinds of things. So, is one of the conditions that maybe the trees will be gone, or does, are we finding ourselves in the same situation where the arborist says, no, the tree stays, and so, basically, we've just allowed it to go with, and the variance, you know, that kind of thing? I'm just trying to get an understanding of it, instead of moving so quickly. And if somebody can help me understand it a little bit better, I appreciate it. So, Stephanie, the, the question would be, so, the arborist goes in, and off the table right away is the tr, or on the table is the tree stay, and now, and we go from there. So, then, basically, there's no conditions, if, if we know the tree's gonna stay, then why are we even, why are we playing the game with the arborist at this point, and putting the gentleman through more trouble?
So, if I, if I can understand, so, are, are you concerned that, that even, so, if in the middle of construction, and they've already, you know, they're halfway through construction, and all of a sudden, they realize the tree's not gonna make it, I mean, I think that the ship has sailed for the variance. I mean, the building has already been placed, you know, with, with the variance, you know, goes to the setback. I mean, my understanding is, I think this process with the county arborist is to just have routine inspections out there, you know, make sure there isn't heavy equipment parked over the root system, that they've kept their fence up, and they're not, you know, storing something inside of the fence boundaries, that it's really just about, you know, keeping the trees, you know, as, as healthy as possible throughout the, the course of construction, if I understood it correctly?
Right.
Answer your question.
Yes, sir.
This all came about because of the county arborist. So, he thinks the trees are gonna make it, or they wanted to make this attempt. This isn't, wasn't my idea. This was their idea. I'm just working with them. So, the county arborist wanted to do this. And as far as him protect, him checking it, that what we agreed to was to put that fence up and not get inside that fence. And, so, that's what he can check behind, which he'll do, Chuck will do. But Chuck's the one that kind of drove this process. So, the county arborist already said, I want to try to save the trees, that's why we're here. Because I want to just take the tree down, just as you said, it's much easier, you know. And as far as coming late, I apologize, I didn't know I had to attend this meeting. I thought this was like a staff presented to y'all, and I didn't think I had to be here. But, um, no one told me. I've never done one of these. So, I apologize for being late.
No, 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 I didn't come, I didn't know I was coming until she called me, and I busted it over.
And I don't mean to prolong things, I guess, part of my feeling of responsibility here is that, as I, I had said when we talked about that big, that one hundred eighty-seven prod, unit project out there by ninety-nine, the last time, if the trees end up going down, basically, what we've done as a committee is, we've given, so consequently, I, I, that's why I struggle as I, I sit at home and try to go through all this and understand it clearly, is that I don't feel my, my job on the, on the, sitting on the board, I have a responsibility to everybody, not to give, and this may not be accurately saying, not to give away property, or increase buildable property for zero dollars. That, that's part of my issue, not just for this, everything. And I'm just trying, that's what I struggle with, in my responsibility.
Not making argument, be the fuck about any way you want to vote, because I don't, you know, I just want to get...
Oh, I under...
But, the silver lining of this, there's a eighty-foot right-of-way, and there's a single-foot road, and they would never, expanding that road's not gonna happen.
Oh, I agree. I understand.
You have, you have twenty extra feet to play with, in my mind. That's why I went through the process, because I didn't think it was gonna be that big. Because aesthetically and visually, you have an eighty-foot right-of-way versus a sixty, so there's just really more space on that side. So, we're gonna gamble with four feet to see if we can save a tree? Okay, let's do it. If it makes everybody happy, and everybody's, what they want to do, I'm, I'm for it. If they don't want to do it, I'm for taking the tree down.
I'm gonna just put this out, maybe ease Mike's question. If you took the one tree down, you could shift the house back to six feet, do what you want to do, and move on. This, because I can't read this little print, I mean, it's...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I presented the plans to take the trees down.
Mm-hmm.
Take, you know, and the county staff wanted me to go through this process, which I obliged. The main reason I did is because the right-of-way is eighty feet, and I figured, what's four or five feet? So, I tried to make the plan the best I could, just the porch, which is low, you know, and a pool, which is underground, which you're not gonna see. So, you know, and I kept everything on the property. So, I thought the variance from aesthetics was very minimal. You know, it's not like a two-story structure, it's just a porch. It's just basically the, the front door. And it's a pool, which is under the ground, you don't see. So, that, that's why I didn't think it'd be that big a deal, and I agreed to go through the process.
Now, that's, but again, if you took the trees down, you could shift the house back for six feet, and it wouldn't, I mean, you can take the trees down, they, I don't, I think you could get permission to remove the trees. So, if the trees were removed, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. You, you'd build that same exact house, shift it back six feet, and...
If they would approve the plans I submitted the first time, we'd never be here today.
So, I guess my point is, you're, you're building the house, whether you try to save the tree, or you cut the trees down. So, this is happening regardless, and then, we're just giving a last-ditch effort to preserve that one tree.
And the last-ditch effort, who I brought this up, came from your arborist, came from Chuck.
Okay.
Chuck's the one that started this process. So, to answer your question, he, he does think it's worth doing, because he's the one that pushed it.
I have no further question.
And please don't misunderstand, I'm not putting this on you. I'm trying to learn and understand, and, and like I said, I, I feel real strong responsibility...
You're doing a good job of representing.
...in the privilege of sitting up here, and I'm just trying to understand it, and make sure I can align it with myself. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm good. If you want to move the question, Mr. Chairman?
Y'all did do a second on this, on this...
Yes.
Okay.
We were having the discussion, and...
So, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Do I have a vote? All of us in favor, say, raise your right hand. All opposed?
You have your variance.
Your answer's approved. With nothing else on the agenda, I will adjourn today's meeting.